Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucy Bisson and I am the Chair of the Lewiston Planning Board, and I welcome you this evening and call this meeting to order. Christine, could you give us the role call, please?
Yes, Roger Dupree.
Yeah.
Michael Marcot.
Present.
Lucy Bisson.
Yes.
Myself, Christine Kittredge, Amy Smith.
Here.
And Alexander Pine.
Here.
Okay. All right. Typically, we would have the election of officers for the planning board this evening. But since we still have several vacancies on the planning board, and we are, I have suggested that we postpone the election of the officers and review the adoption of the 2024 policies until the next meeting, which is January 22.
I'd make a motion to postpone Agenda Items Two and Three to the next regular planning meeting.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll call the role. Roger Dupree.
Yes.
Michael Marcot.
Yes.
Christine Kittredge.
Yes.
Amy Smith.
Yes.
And Alex Pine.
Yes.
Lucy Bisson. Yes. Okay.
Appointment to the associate, voting member.
Yes, I was just going to do that. Thank you. Yes, and Alex will be our associate member. He will be voting member this evening because of the vacancies. All right. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Shelley?
No.
Correspondence?
I just want to remind the board that tomorrow night at 6:00, you have a joint workshop with the City Council and Finance Committee to look at the Lewiston Capital Improvement Program Plan. And I did get an email that I believe those materials have been posted. We did forward that email to you. So if you want to have a sneak peek at it before tomorrow night, you can look at the website.
Okay. Alex?
So for those of us who have a term expiring, end of this meeting?
No, it's tomorrow night. Are you?
Oh, it's tomorrow night?
Yes.
Yep. You guys are good for the night, so you can...
Fantastic.
And I think, I think planning board will be in the audience anyway, so certainly you could go as a member of the public. But yes, you will be planning.
And it's at 6:00?
6:00.
From 6:00 to 7:00? Okay. Okay. Public hearings. So the gentleman from Bourgeois is not here?
I was just, yeah, I was just texting him to call.
Okay. All right. So we will have public hearings, and at this time, we will have Item 6B. Masjidul, and I apologize for mispronouncing the name, Salam Mosque, has submitted a development review application to expand the existing parking lot and increase the occupancy of their existing building located at 240 Bartlett Street. Ah.
You made it.
You made it.
I sure did, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm going to continue with... Okay. So Shelley, could you give us a staff comment on the mosque, please?
Certainly. So this is an existing facility on Bartlett Street that's being used as a mosque. It was purchased in 2011 for that purpose. In 2012, the planning board approved a site plan that allows a maximum occupancy in the building of 94 people. The building certainly is larger than that, but at that point in time, that's what was available for parking on-site. And that part of the building is being used as office space and men's prayer area. In accordance with that plan, the northwestern portion of the building was not approved for occupancy. And prior to use of that portion, additional onsite parking is required under the city's parking requirements. The approved plan also noted that that portion of the building and basement couldn't be used until they came back for development review approval, except obviously like the mechanicals and utilities in the basement could be. So this project entails the expansion of the existing parking lot onsite and improved parking lot drainage in the rear to allow for greater occupancy of the building. It is noted that there's going to be interior work that will be required as part of any expansion of the use of the interior of the building, especially in that northwest section of the building. So the prior approved plan from 2012 for the 94-person occupancy shows 25 spaces onsite. And so the expansion is to create 23 additional parking spaces onsite. So one item that we wanted to bring forward is that the way our ordinance currently is written for religious facilities, it doesn't take into account worship space that doesn't include fixed seating. So the ordinance states one space per each four seats. Where individual seats are not provided, each 24 inches of bench or similar seating, or eight square feet of seating or standing space. Shall be considered one seat for the purpose of determining requirements thereof. So because the worship involves essentially being on the floor, whether it's seated or standing, but there's different positions involved, and there's not a fixed seat or a bench, there's a demarcated space on the floor that's used for, you know, per person. Staff had conversations with the applicant about how to identify how much area per person should be allocated. And the recommendation that was worked out was to use 10 square feet, which is the size that the mosque has demarcated on their floor. So that would be the recommendation for determining occupancy for one person. I have a chart here that outlines how much additional square footage the applicant is looking to utilize. And based on that, a requirement of 55 spaces would be required using the 10 square feet per person, and then using our current ordinance requirement, which is, you know, one parking space for each four people. So the plan shows 23 additional spaces for a total of 48 onsite parking spaces. This leaves a shortage under that, you know, factoring of seven spaces that are not readily available onsite. The Article 12, Section 17 of the zoning land use code states that the planning board can make a determination about parking need. It also states that offsite parking can be provided if it's within 1,320 feet of the property line of the building in use. So the applicant has made an agreement with the Coliseum to utilize those seven spaces that they don't have onsite. And you have the agreement, which was provided, as well as communication with staff that you can look at. The agreement doesn't have an end date or anything like that. And certainly, it's possible it could be terminated. So that's something that the board may want to consider. So for uses that can be shown to have a differing parking need, either fewer or greater than otherwise required by the ordinance, the board has the authority to determine what that parking demand is. And to determine, in this case, if what they're proposing has adequate parking for what they're proposing to do. So we did note in here, staff has been to the site, you know, three or four, I think probably four Fridays in December and November that we were there. And we were there this past Friday. Just to look and see around the peak usage, because that's really the peak time, is midday on Friday, you know, what was in use. And at that time, certainly, there's on-street parking being used and McGraw Park parking. But at other times during the week, it appears that parking onsite is sufficient. So if you move forward with action tonight, there are a couple of recommendations for conditions of approval. This applicant has asked to provide proof of financial capacity at the time that they would apply for a building permit, so that has not been included in the application. We have a standard condition here that we recommend, that a professional engineer be hired to certify that all the improvements were done according to plan prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And then finally, just prior to the expansion of the use of the building, that building permits may be required, or will be required, and the certificate of occupancy. So there are a couple of determinations that would need to be made. The first is to determine if those 23 additional spaces being provided onsite are sufficient based on your ability as a board to determine parking demand. And then, second, to take action on the application itself.
Okay. Thank you. Will the applicant please come up and give us some information? I don't know who is representing the mosque this evening.
I think that's to be determined among yourselves there. Who wants to speak? Whoever should can go sit at the table.
At the table, and I...
Put your phone, please.
Yeah. Please come and sit at the table and give us your name and your address for the record. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nadifa Mohammed, and I represent Masjid Salam as the current CEO of the Masjid.
Okay. And you live in Lewiston?
I live in Auburn.
Oh, you live in Auburn. Okay. That's fine. And you, sir?
I live in Auburn. I'm Bill Hamilton. I'm an architect.
Okay.
And helping these people try to make this building work eventually to the best of its ability.
Okay. All right. And can you give us some information, Mr. Hamilton, perhaps?
Well, as you can, as anybody here might realize, the building, of course, was never built as a mosque. I think it was built for preparing buses, wasn't it?
It was a screen printing company.
And things like that. So somehow, it became available. They needed space, and they began to use that space. And they use it with the parking that's really shown in the lower section of it, right immediately behind the building and to the right of the building. And they also parked on the street where they, whenever they, you know, wherever it was needed as well. And they could even park just inside the sidewalk. But in time, that wasn't adequate. And it became one of a learning kind of curve for anybody trying to figure out, what do they do? So by working with the city, we talked about the potential of using the space that's in the gray in the back for additional parking. So that when they have the one, their most important time of the week is Friday. Friday from noon, the afternoon.
It varies. For summertime, it'll be from 12 until 2, 1:45 latest, too. And then during the cold season, it'll be from 11:15, I mean, 12:45 until 1:15, 1:30. And then everything is done by then. Yeah.
And so that really substantially improved their potential to use it. There certainly were never, that building was never designed, as we know, for their use. So they just had space. And that's all they needed at that time, was space. And that's all they need, I think, today, is space. And primarily, the space that was approved is on the right-hand side. And there's a portion in the middle that's related to bathrooms and things like that. It's there. Even the right-hand side exceeded their need for space. It was more than they needed. So the front section itself is sort of like two rooms, just an office and a place to sit around if they need to have a little meeting or just chat. And then there's a middle space. It's really just an expansion of the entrance. And that's what it's been developed for today. Any further development of it... And the reason that I got involved really wasn't the space initially. It was really for the quality of the life safety kind of implements of the building. And that's been designed and developed and been improved. So that's where that is. That's where we are today. And they expanded, they've agreed that they could, would accept the expansion. We have a budget for the back section. And it's few, just shy of a few cars of what their hope is. And that's where they went to the Coliseum and said, could we do that? Because what they were getting, what people, what was happening, I guess, was they were getting clogged up on the street, just where to park and how to handle it. And this will straighten all that out and try to make it more amenable to their needs and work in more compatible, be more compatible with the ease of the driving through this space.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Do any members of the boards have any questions of either staff or the applicant at this time? Yes, Alex?
I think the motion seems pretty straightforward to me. Makes sense. But I would like to ask the applicant, I want to make sure that we get the name correct when we read it for the record. Could you teach me how to say the name properly so I can write it down phonetically so we make the motion correct?
My name, N as in Nancy.
Oh, no.
No, no.
For the name of the mosque.
Oh, for the Masjid?
Yeah.
Masjid, M as in Mary.
Yeah.
A, Alpha, S, M.
No, we have it written down. We just don't know how to say it.
Oh, Masjid Salam Mosque.
Masjid?
Masjid.
Masjid?
Salam.
Salam?
Mosque.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
No worries.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Roger?
With the expansion that you have on both sides of the entrance, the capacity was 94 people. Is that the maximum? Or is there a lot more people available to fill those spaces?
Not at this time. I mean, it's like anything else. They knew what the lot could support. They could live with what the lot will support if it's improved. And that's where we were drawing the line. And that's how we came to that number. If I'm correct, I think that's, everybody's in understanding on that. And then, when we actually drew the line inside the building to define the, for the prayer spaces inside, it required a few more cars. And that's when they went to the, to the... A fairly long time coming up to this date has passed. You know, two to three years, really. And in that process, you know, we're trying to figure out how to make all of it mesh together. And that's where they've agreed that they are willing, you know, willing to work with you all and try to work with the city and do that. They would, they would love to build a new mosque somewhere.
Right.
But that's not in the cards at this time.
Another question. The agreement that you have with the Coliseum, is that on a yearly basis or a monthly basis? Or how does that work?
For the, for that agreement, it is every day. It's not yearly, it's not monthly. But we will have to obey what the agreement says, like each step, each object, and we have. So, and that will be for every Friday until we violate any of the objects that we have agreed on.
So you have to renew it every year?
No. We do not.
Okay.
But the hope is to build eventually the parking space that we, that we are obligated to do so that we can expand, and we do not have to have worshippers cross, like, from Coliseum to the Bartlett Mosque.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alex?
I know it's not on our motions for tonight and probably not required by the city, but I would encourage the applicant to consider green space. And when you develop out this part of the lot, I mean, in looking at the aerial image right now, it's sort of just a grassy field. And so, you know, anything that butts the back of a city park, right? Or walking trails. So anything that you can do to keep that in mind, you know, it's not required by the city, it's not required by us, but I'm sure you want your place of worship to look beautiful as well, so...
Yes.
Okay.
We appreciate that. We've talked about that.
Okay. So if I understand this correctly... So I'm looking at the, at the plan that we were given of the building itself.
Of the building, yep.
Of the building itself. So, and I understand there's a women's section and a men's section, and bathrooms in between. So right now, you're saying that there will be up to 94 people in the building with this, this change?
That's what the existing allowed occupancy on the men's side is, is 94. It's based on the 2012 site.
Okay. So it would increase to that, to 135, correct? Is that the next number?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're increasing it to 135. Okay. So that's just men, but what about women?
At this point, there is, they would like to do that. But Shelley, that hasn't, hasn't been approached.
No, that is part of the application. So if you look at the staff review, I tried to summarize that so it would be clearer on the chart. So what they're asking for is, it's essentially an occupancy of 73 people on the women's side.
Yeah.
And then an occupancy of 140 on the men's side, I believe.
Okay. Which is what requires the 55 spaces.
Yeah.
And, and they're down, they're only got 48? So they're, they're missing, they're missing seven?
Seven, that's right.
Okay. So, so they're, you're going to be fixing up the whole building?
That's in, that's in...
That's the intention?
That's in long-term.
Long-range intention?
Long-term.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any further questions? Yes, Michael?
I was just curious, as we were going over the diagram, the previous one that was up on the screen, showing the parking spaces. I'm noticing some arrows that point towards each other. Is there two-way traffic around the building?
Yep.
That looks like it.
So in front of the building, you have an arrow moving to the left. On the left side, you have an arrow moving down.
Well, yeah, what those are indicating is you come in, you see the entrance there on the left, on the right. And those arrows just are indicating that we want to keep everybody going in the same direction.
Well, that's why I'm wondering, getting people going in opposite directions. I don't think there's going to be space to...
They're not, they're not, yeah. No, I understand. I understand confusion. They're, they're going straight ahead between the two existing parking areas that are immediately to the right of the building. And then, if they go anything, they'll continue and then move to the left. And they'll keep everybody going to the left and exit to the left of the... Well, maybe, maybe I should be careful. That's maybe you brought it the wrong way, how you're looking at it.
The arrow that you're concerned about?
Yes, that's the one.
I would imagine that's just for the handicap spots in the front.
Yeah.
To access those.
Yeah.
Right. There are, there are two handicap spaces in the front.
So just to illustrate, I think I'm understanding what you're saying. So people will enter in here. If you're using a handicap space, you will proceed along here, go into the handicap or pull out. And the exit from the lot is the curb cut over here. So then they go out. Or if you're going to general parking, you go back, you're using the general parking. And once you're done, you go out the same curb.
Just as long as you're not facing somebody when you're coming back around.
Well, you won't be, no, yes, you have to be careful.
Just an intersection.
Yeah, just those two spots.
And when the two handicap people back out to their respective spaces, they're going to be facing the oncoming traffic.
They'll be backing out into traffic.
And, yeah, both. Both backing out into traffic. And they'll be literally facing the oncoming traffic unless they back up far enough to make the two- or three-point turn.
The cars for the handicap, if they are backing out, there's really only two cars there.
Right.
Yeah.
And the cars that are going straight ahead into that first area, into the number, in the, where it says 6, 6, and 6, they're just going to go right directly. The reason this is angled is to control the parking. So it goes in one direction, not against itself.
Yeah, there's no difference, I think, between terms of backing out into a travel lane here and backing out into a travel lane there. I'm understanding.
Except for the fact that when you back out of those lanes on the side of the building, you're going to be driving forward to go around the building. When you back out of the handicap spaces, you're not going to be going forward to leave the parking lot.
Oh.
No.
You are. You're going forward along the front of the building to leave the parking lot through the curb.
Right there.
There's a curb cut there.
Right.
There is.
That's indicated by the sidewalk.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't notice the curb cut there. And curious as to what appears to be an underutilization towards the back of the lot. There appears to be enough space there that you could have had another, not a double-sided parking strip, but a single-sided up against the perimeter of the property. Why couldn't that have been used?
Is there a swale or something up, out there?
Looking at the gradient, there's 100...
Looks like it's...
Starts at 180 feet and goes down pretty significantly. So that looks like stormwater retention to me. Could staff...
Okay. 180, 166, 166, and back to 180?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's unusable?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for the applicant or staff at this time? Okay.
And also for the record, we do have up to four to five generals who monitor the vehicles when the prayer starts and when it finishes so that we can make sure the safety of everyone, that vehicles are only going one direction, getting out one direction.
Good.
Yes, Roger?
Question. When people are parking in the Coliseum, how they, what is their traffic route to get to the mosque?
On the streets? What will the streets?
Do they walk through the school? Or do they walk down Bartlett Street?
There are choices, but the easiest to get, because I have tried it myself and we did with other community members, it is through this pathway road behind the Masjid all the way to Lonely School where the multi-propeller center that gets into the Coliseum. So they can take that back road unless they want to do a long exercise walk all the way from Coliseum to Bartlett Street to come to the mosque.
So there is a path between?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Roger, would you like to see it? I have it pulled up. I've been looking at it. I had the same question as you when I heard the Coliseum. I was like, how do people walk there? So if you'd like to see it, I can bring it over. You're good? Okay.
Okay. Any, any other questions, comments? Okay. All right. At this time, I'm going to be opening it up to the public for comments. If you wish to speak for or against this project, would you please step up to the podium and speak your, say your name and your address? And you will have three minutes to speak. Everyone gets to speak once and for three minutes.
Once for this topic?
Once for this, once for this project. Once for each project. Once for this, once for this project, once for each project, so.
Rules of procedure.
Rules of procedure is three minutes for every, every person, and you speak once, Mr. Terrio.
Does it seem unusual that a person like myself that has at least two million dollars of real estate only has three minutes?
It's three, yep, everybody gets three minutes, Mr. Terrio. Okay, at this time, I will open it up to the public, and anyone who wishes to speak for or against the project, if you would speak up, step up and give your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Dennis Terrio. I own the properties at two forty-three, two forty-five, two forty Bartlett Street. I am against this project for one simple reason, it's an over-intensification of the site. I approached the city council years ago, Larry Gilbert was the mayor at that time, gave a whole presentation. I ended up getting sent to Judge Clifford, okay, for supposedly to mediate this, and Judge Clifford point-blank said, Dennis, your property is your property, you're doing absolutely nothing wrong. I would imagine Judge Clifford will represent me someday in the future when we call on him. What happened is the other day, when Shelly said that they inspected the, on a Friday, when you inspect it on a Friday, there were seventy-nine cars. There were thirty-three parked over at McGraw, three parked in front of my building, front of my mall, okay, heading towards Italian Bakery, there were thirteen, and in the mosque area, which I have pictures of, there were thirty, for a total of seventy-nine cars. So imagine how many people were inside. That's an over-intensification of the site. Regards to the Colosseum, nobody's walking to the Colosseum, okay, they have a hard time walking from McGraw to, the applicant is having a hard time doing that just there. But again, there's another part of this where the dumpster, I have pictures, and it seems like part of the language is reducing the size of the dumpster. They can't even, the dumpster right now, which I have pictures of, and I'll leave that with you people to look through, dumpsters are full all the time, they come across my property all the time, we have to maintain that. This has been very frustrating. My family has owned that property for over a hundred years. We're very, very familiar with what goes on across the street. Mr. Mayotte, Mark Mayotte, is impacted by this, I have pictures of that, and we'll show you that, I'll give you those to look over. Italian Bakery, at this point in time, nobody goes to Italian Bakery at this time because you can't park. They even attempt to park inside of Brandon's first section between myself and the Italian Bakery. I don't have an answer for this, it's, what you definitely need is a traffic study. Somebody independent of all this needs to take a serious look at it, okay, every Friday or whatever goes on, because they back into the roads, they are already parking in the rear, and the pictures will, will show you that. If you don't mind my approaching, Lucy, to give you these.
Yep, you got half a minute.
Half a minute?
Left, yes.
I was on the planning board, I didn't give you guys a mark of that.
I know.
There you go. That includes when I was a city councilor.
Pass.
You're going to see pretty much here the impact and what's written on those and the number of vehicles. This happens consistently. My property, that's leased out, the applicant, the leases can't get out.
I'm sorry, your time's up. Sorry, Dennis.
No, Lucy, if this doesn't work out, we're going to a much different level.
I understand.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against? Just step up and please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
How are you doing? My name is Matthew Terrio, I'm the general manager for Leonard Heavy Rescue located at two thirty-nine Bartlett Street, and I also live at two forty-five Bartlett Street. On a consistent basis, I've had to call in police department, I've tried calling code enforcement, I've had numerous talks with Mr. Hedinger to the point that he's even come down to witness it. I can't get my trucks out of my yard, the, actually, I think the term you used was a clear over-intensification of the property that was there, that you never thought that it would get to this. The police department has told us that they're pretty much the gatekeepers of this, that they're just thrown this that they have to deal with, and they're not really sure what to do with it because it's being allowed by staff. The parking in that area is very inadequate, so they pull into our yard, they pull into the entrance, they leave the vehicle and go in to go pray. I've called the police department numerous times, they come in and they go, well, the most we can do is ticket it. I've had numerous instances where I've had to cancel state police calls, Boston PD calls because I couldn't get my trucks out of my yard to go respond to those. Thousands of dollars lost because of this. And basically, I'm told, well, we'll give them a parking ticket. The parking actually that you have up on the screen right now, the big issue with that is that for what's already there for parking, you're actually eliminating parking spaces of what they're already utilizing to create this parking plan that's here. And nobody's really asked that question as to, look at Google Earth of what they're striped for right now and what's there, and they're actually reducing the amount of parking. McGraw Park is packed as it is, this yard is parked, and nobody's even talked about the fact that the building next door, two fifty-six Bartlett Street, shares the same entrance with this, and the way that this traffic pattern is being redone, they exit out where you guys are trying to have them enter into this place. So I'm trying to figure out how this is all going to work, seeing that you've got two businesses that when two fifty-six got approved, they were told, well, we've got an agreement with the tenants next door that we can utilize their parking. How do you ignore one that you approved and said, yeah, we're going to give that, and then all of a sudden, we magically make that number disappear and go, well, that project's already done and approved, now we're only looking at this project? You approved one with the fact that they were going to share parking, now that shared parking just disappeared? If you go by even during the day, there's a repair facility actually behind two fifty-six Bartlett Street, there's cars that get towed in over there to be repaired out back, that utilize all these parking spaces that are there. I guess I'm asking, and I haven't seen anything in any of the notes from the fire department, can you actually access this with a fire truck to be able to pull in over here, make the corner out back?
The fire department said they had no comments.
They had no comments? Okay.
Your time, your time's up, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against this project? In that case, I will close it to the public and bring it back to the board and for further discussion.
I'd like to ask Mr. Terrio a question. There's only the dumpster here full of trash and trash next to it. Now, is that all from the mosque or is that from the surrounding neighborhood?
No, that's all from the mosque, that was done not three days ago.
Have you seen these, the people from the mosque putting trash in there?
Oh, we don't, I mean, go ahead. I can speak exactly to that. Friday mornings, Walmart does a food delivery over there for donation, and they leave pallets of food in the driveway, and then throughout the day, they end up having people come in, grab food and whatnot, and that's the remnants every Friday that we deal with that's there, and that is for the mosque, yes. And I've got pictures of everything from Walmart trucks delivering, I can get your videos, whatever, Good Shepherd delivers over there as well, and everything is left in there. In the summertime, we've got seagulls picking up food, carrying it across the yard, dropping it on our property in the street, everything else. And that is every Friday. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments from the board? Michael?
I had something, but I don't have any time remembering it. My mind's kind of locking in on something other than what I wanted to bring up, but when we heard that there's already an over-intensification of parking, of more vehicles than this plan is outlining for parking spaces, that's going to create a problem because it's, when I read, part of the determination motion has sufficient parking based on the routine use of the site. If that's the routine use of the site, I don't think seven spaces at the Colosseum are going to be enough. And then where do they park? That's a serious concern of mine, and I'm still trying to find that other issue.
While you're searching, I'll, I'll speak, and while you're searching, if you find it, just let me know. I have a serious, I mean, I'm, I understand that, that it's only certain periods of time that there is this intensification of parking. Unfortunately, it's a problem now, and if we add more people, it will only exacerbate the problem in the area. And I have driven by on a Friday noon time, and it's very difficult to get through because there's the curve in Bartlett Street, and this time of the year and or during the winter, the road is much narrower, and if there's parking on both sides, it's, it's not a good situation. So unfortunately, I am really not, I really can't vote to say yes to this intensification at this time.
I remember, you said something.
Okay. I thought it might ring a bell.
The agreement with the Colosseum, I think it was mentioned earlier, that there was no end date, and reading the three back-and-forth emails with Jim at the Maynard Deeks, there, at one point, there was an understanding that it was temporary, I don't know how we can approve something that's based on a temporary agreement with, on a butter or somebody within so many feet from the place to qualify for parking for this purpose. And the final, if I got the date sequence correctly, it was his understanding that the mosque will only require the extra parking on Fridays, and at times specified for religious gatherings, and somewhere else here, it also said something about extended for spring and summer, which I suspect means spring and summer of two thousand twenty-four, but that means that what happens afterwards, what happens if there's no agreement thereafter? So I likewise cannot support this tonight.
Okay. Yes, Christine?
Could we give the applicant a chance to respond to the concerns that were raised?
You can if you ask, we can ask specific, the board can ask the public specific questions, just as Mr. Dupree asked, Mr. Terrio.
Well, I guess I just would ask if, if they had any response to the concerns that were raised by the public.
Yeah, Mr. Hamilton, or, and I apologize, I don't remember your name.
Thanks again, everyone. I just wanted to clarify for the record that Friday's food distribution is for mirrors, not for the mosque. We do get one thousand pound every Thursday from Good Shepherd Food Bank for the worshipers, and roughly, we give out before even prayer times on Thursdays. And the dumpster that the public had concern about, mirrors allow us to use it when we need it for trash, but the dumpster brings to mirrors itself. It is not something that the mosque uses, and the, for Friday's food pallets out, I do understand the public safety and everything, but that is not something that the mosque does. It is a mirrors obligation that they have Friday's good food, food distribution out for the community. I just wanted to clarify that for the record, so that we know.
Okay.
And we do understand where the concerns might be coming from.
Okay.
Now, do, does the mosque own the, or pay rent for the dumpster?
No, we do not.
Who pays rent for the dumpster?
Mirrors.
I'm sorry?
Maine Immigration Refugee Services, mirrors.
Okay, do they operate out of the mosque?
No.
They operate on the building next door?
Yes.
Okay, but why is the dumpster next to your, your building?
Because they do not have a space to use, they ask us if they can put that space, and if we need any trash that we need to dump us out, we can do, that's a favor they did for the mosque, so that we do not have to go out to dumpster, put stuff in.
Okay, well, maybe mirrors needs to get a bigger dumpster.
Or add a dumpster?
Or add a dumpster, you know, because if it's, if it's not containing, then, then, you know, I think staff needs to address that with the, with that organization, to require them to get a bigger dumpster, a bigger or another dumpster. The parking situation, that is my ultimate concern. It is, if, if there's too many cars now, and we add more people to the building, there'll be even more cars.
I totally understand that. I don't, I think it's got, it's got to be understood, this whole thing is a, is a, it's sort of like a collecting spot that developed a number of years ago. And we can't do that. You can't just sort of let this thing keep growing so, very successfully. So I think that, that what we have presented, what they presented, what they need to, what the mosque needs to work with, what mirrors needs to work with, is an understanding of what limits are. And you just can't say, okay, we could count four people per car, and that'll allow so many cars to supply the number of people, and then bring two cars, you know, for those. That's, that's, that's a process of learning, of learning that's going to have to take place. We've talked about that. And more talking has to take place. I'm not trying to in any way criticize them or anybody, but it's, 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 does have to have a learning curve. And I'm, could easily appreciate, not as well as the other people in the neighborhood could appreciate it, I'm not going to claim that, that this is a perception and a workability situation that has to be solved. I know mirrors is going to become an issue of, of understanding. I mean, it just logically says that, that, it's easy to say that. That doesn't mean I can solve it, I'm not being hired by mirrors, and at this time. But more discussion has to go on in this whole lot, more discussion has to go on by the mosque itself, just to understand how, how they're going to work with the community.
Okay.
And I'm more than willing to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Okay.
Just to clarify with staff, so by, if we were to.
Okay, you can sit back in the audience.
Yeah. To approve or, or not allow the additional parking space will change the occupancy allowed in the building? Or is this trying to get the parking to match up with the theoretical occupancy of the building based on what we allow under code? So, so is this, is this a case of we're increasing the intensity of the use of the building? Or is this us trying to, to increase the amount of parking to match the intensity of the building that already exists?
Okay. So the application before you, the applicant is asking to increase the occupancy of the building. Based on that, we've calculated what the ordinance would require for parking with some tweaks because they don't have fixed seating, and so there's a determination that you can make as to whether that is the parking demand or not, and, and whether what's being proposed is adequate since they have lesser parking, you know, than they would need, and have that agreement with Colosseum. So it's got a few moving parts.
Got it. And in the ordinance, when I was reading it, it was originally allowing for a four-by-four standing spot per parishioner, right? I believe that's what it said in here. So that's actually been increased in terms of square footage per person to be ten, ten square feet. So, so it's a lower occupancy based on sort of the new calculations that staff did. And it seems like maybe there's a disconnect between the assumptions made in the code, which is that four people will show up in a car to a service, like a standard family, you know, two and a half kids will show up to a service versus the reality where it seems like based on public comment, there are significantly more vehicles showing up, perhaps implying single occupancy in those vehicles, and that's creating traffic issues in the neighborhood. Are there any tools, and, and to me, it seems like having additional parking to get some of those cars off the street, to get them out of the way of the neighbors, is important. Are there additional tools or conditions that we could add into this motion to help alleviate, or help begin the process of alleviating some of these neighborhood problems that seem like right now, they don't really have someone who can sort of own them and, and help them get managed right now, you know, it's sort of, staff says, you know, you know, city staff, not, not planning staff, city staff just says, oh, we can ticket cars, and that's all we can do. Is there a way to look at maybe making a solution that's going to increase the parking available on the site, make more parking available for folks that are off the street, while also making sure that the surrounding businesses aren't impacted the way they are? Or at least begin that process?
I don't know as we have any great suggestions other than additional land.
Or requiring additional parking for the.
Right, and where would the parking be located?
And that would be requiring additional parking beyond what our ordinances require for houses of worship.
Right, you could certainly do that. I mean, it's within your purview to determine that, you know, for the existing ninety-four occupancy, that, you know, the existing parking is insufficient, and to determine that additional and to determine that additional occupancy would require, you know, more parking. I mean, there's, that's certainly one determination the board could make.
So we could determine that, you know, this, this parking, you know, the, the expanding the parking meets, meets city rules. However, expanding the occupancy does not at this point, or until, until neighbor concerns are addressed?
Yeah, or maybe a refrasing of that would be that the board would make a finding that, you know, the proposed parking is insufficient for the requested increase of occupancy. And it could be, you know, some degree of occupancy. I'm not suggesting what that number is of occupancy to car ratio.
Yeah, I just to sort of post this back to the board-
Right. We also have the option of not making a finding this evening and postponing, asking staff to come back with some more suggestions, such as what you're discussing, the, you know, how can we help them, help the neighbors? And, and if we postpone it or table it, we have 30 days to come up with a finding. So that is an option, instead of using the findings that are, are written here. We can, I've been told we can do that. We can postpone the findings, asking staff to give us more information, and come back within 30 days.
Yeah, it seems like the issues facing the site on all the different levels revolve around sufficient parking-
Right.
And sufficient control of resources. And so trying to figure out a plan that, that works for folks, you know.
For the mosque and for the neighbors.
Exactly, exactly. And, and having something, you know, there's a solid plan to increase parking spaces. That's going to help. But it seems like there's, there's more on top of that.
Right.
Should we make a motion to postpone?
To continue.
To continue.
To continue.
To the next meeting.
So-
I'd like to say something.
Certainly, absolutely, Roger.
I agree with you in a way, Alex, but the thing is, looking at the pictures here, you know, as far as expanding the parking in the rear of that, it's already being used. You know, so by doing so, you're just exasperating the problem. The problem is parking, and I think the mosque has got to talk to their, their people about parking in the Coliseum to relieve the congestion on Bartlett Street. These gentlemen over here are losing business, and other businesses are losing financial status as a result of the parking that's going on, on that particular day. So something has to be done as far as your membership in the mosque, parking in other areas, in alleviating, you know, the congestion on Bartlett Street. As far as what's going on in the back of the church already, it's already being done. So I don't know why we're here.
Right. Okay. So consensus, would we want to?
Continue to another meeting-
Continue. I can never remember the right word.
Or make a decision tonight.
Continue to, and ask staff to come up with some working, perhaps-
Staff and the applicant.
And the applicant.
And they can come back with another solution.
Staff and the applicant. I mean, this is a situation that, that has been going on for some time, and it, it becomes, it's just becoming more exacerbated. So I would suggest that we make a motion to continue, and bring it back once we have some more information from staff and they're working with the, with the applicant and with the neighbors, to see if we can possibly help these people, help their neighbors. So I would entertain that motion.
Well, this is a, so I make, I want to make a motion to sustain this topic?
Continue.
Or continue, continue, sorry. Continue this topic, and encourage the applicant and city staff to bring back proposals for replying to or addressing neighborhood concerns while also meeting, meeting the needs of this house of worship.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I will call the roll.
David is asking you to do it to a date certain, so it would be your next meeting.
I beg your pardon?
To continue to a date certain, so it would be the next meeting on the 22nd.
Our next meeting, which would be January 22nd. Okay. Yeah.
That's what it says on there.
Well, and I, I looked at my calendar. So, okay. So Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexandra Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin, yes. So we will please discuss with the staff, neighbors, and come back on the 22nd. Okay?
So for what it's worth, that, there isn't another notice with that, so that's the reason for the board identifying the 22nd. So if there are people here today for that matter, just remember to come back on the 22nd.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. See, I don't hate you, Dennis.
Give me time.
I kind of like you. Well, that's true. I've known you a long time. I don't hate you. Okay. All right. So we will go back to the agenda. Public hearings. A petition submitted by Bourgeois Guitars LLC for the planning board to send a recommendation to the city council on a contract zone request for 43 and 51 North Lisbon Road to allow wood processing and industrial use. Okay.
Okay.
And industrial use. Okay.
So this application is for 43 and 51 North Lisbon Road. This contract zone was discussed with you at your November 27th meeting, I believe it was, as a concept. And so we're here tonight with the applicant with a complete application, and the details of the contract zone developed. It's a fairly simple contract zone as they go. Really, the intent is to continue the highway business district uses as they are, and as they get amended in the future. But just to add one additional use to that, which is the storing, milling, drying, heat treating, torifying, and processing of whole logs into parts for musical instruments and musical instrument accessories. The contract zone would utilize the space and bulk standards for the highway business district. And, you know, really, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which identifies this area as a retrofit growth sector with some parcels that are underutilized or need redevelopment. And this is a great, potentially a great reuse of an existing site that has buildings and has a lot of impervious surfaces already. So I'll let the applicant speak to this if the board has questions. But in our conversations, our understanding is that the, the sawing and the milling and processes that would produce noise would happen inside the building. Really, there might be, you know, some outdoor storage, which could be addressed during site plan review as far as buffering that. But there are, you know, not activities outside that would cause additional nuisances that would be related to this use. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those. But I think, I think it's pretty straightforward from what, from some, some contract zones you've seen.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time? If the applicant would like, yeah, oh, sorry. Sure.
David, do we have any, any reference as far as what the decibel level would be for sawing logs?
It's going to be inside.
Yeah.
Do you still have noise that-
Oh, yeah, well, of course.
Maybe the applicant can speak to that, but I can tell you that our ordinance says it's 60 decibels at the property line. So-
Below 60 decibel?
Yeah. And for better or worse, 60 is low. It's, it's on our list to revisit as far as ordinances. We've been told that our noise ordinance is antiquated, and I'm sure it is. I think it's one of those ones that's probably from the 1980s. But be that as it be, be 60 decibels. So I'm not sure what the equipment might be, but if the majority of it's inside, we're probably going to be outside.
Okay. If the applicant would like to come up and identify himself, your name and address, and perhaps address the decibels?
My name is Christopher Fleming. The address of the business or my personal?
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, 41 Canal Street, Boston.
Okay.
Yeah, I cannot speak to the exact value of the decibel level of any one given piece of equipment. I can say that in my experience, even gas-powered sawmills, the portable sawmills of the type we're looking at, are quieter than some of the Weekend Warrior equipment that we have at the shop now, shapers and routers and, and that type of thing that you'd find in any residence. So I would, I would say that it, it would be equitable with what you would find for indoor use that is in keeping with highway business use at this time. As I know that, you know, obviously, what we're doing here at the guitar shop is, would be consistent with permissible uses. And it can be noisy at times. So I don't expect anything above and beyond that.
Yeah, I just don't want the neighbors complaining because they hear a saw going.
Yeah, no, I completely understand. And, and I, I would, once again, I guess, reference, you know, prior, not, not that that makes it okay, but I would reference prior use of that facility when we had large industrial equipment that was being run outside. And we intend to use, you know, 30 horsepower electric motors inside is, is about as big as we're going to get.
Okay. All right.
But I could certainly find those values per piece of equipment, if that's something that you'd like to see.
I don't think it's that, that important. Michael?
And the use of the saw would be daytime hours, probably?
Yeah, we're going to operate, probably eight to five would be our hours of operation.
When people are even more sensitive to the noise level. I asked a question the last time, and not sure what I came away with. And I'm noticing in this particular packet, even though there is the request for the contract zone signed by somebody who appears to be Dave Gendron, the actual sale agreement is not signed by, well, Gendron.
Yeah.
As yet.
Well, he has signed the purchase and sales, or his representative, I'm not sure who, who signed on his behalf, if he didn't sign it.
I'm wondering if there was something more online than there is in the paper packet, because I think I do remember seeing the name Harris somewhere, online, when I went through that on Friday. But-
I probably have a record of that. I can look that up.
I mean, obviously, it makes all the common sense in the world that the contract zone is simply for sawing logs. And this wouldn't be something that could be called a bait and switch, where Dave Gendron gets the contract zone and then the sale never goes through.
I understand.
That, that, that would, would be a concern. But obviously, the request is a very limited request anyway. Oh, there's Steve Harris's signature right there on the quitclaim deed. That's where I saw it. So, so that was my only concerns there.
Okay. And I can find out the relationship to the seller of this individual?
I, I'm all, I, I believe that everything's on the up and up. It, it isn't, just to make another note that, because this has come up in past years, as Lucy can attest to, we do like to see people in the same neighborhood sign petitions when petitions not like across town. And I'm noticing, I'm not sure, what kind of venue some of these addresses come from. But they, it wasn't door knocking in the same neighborhood as-
No, no, it wasn't. It was, unfortunately, I was, I was talking to Brian and Lincoln about this. I have 31 people in my shop, only one of whom is a Lewiston resident. So I literally was walking around downtown, going business to business in the rain, talking to folks about the project. And I got widespread support, but, but very few folks are actually Lewiston residents.
Residents, yeah.
Voters.
Yeah, yeah.
But I suspected that maybe this was somewhat of an employee list.
Yeah, I wish, would that it were. But, but yeah, no, those, those are folks, a lot of them are employees and business owners downtown.
Okay, great. Great. Anyone else? Alex, yes?
Yeah, I'm wondering, sort of former, former industrial process nerd here, I guess I'm still industrial process nerd. You're talking about torifying, and that can mean a lot of things in a lot of different contexts. Can you talk a little bit more about what you're planning on doing-
Yeah.
-around that in terms of heat treatment?
Yeah, sure. So there are two functions for heat treatment, actually three functions. One is a low-temperature oxygen-deprived environment, primarily just a vacuum kiln for drying lumber. Torrification is a higher temperature operation. We torify at about 165 degrees. It's about a two-to-three day cycle, also in oxygen-deprived environment. The unit that we're looking at is about a 2,000 board foot charge. And the, the applicant, in our application, it has a lot of applications in, excuse me, exterior construction use. It stabilizes the wood, becomes dimensionally stable, and is, is less hydroscopic after treatment, so it doesn't expand and contract. For us, it, it has the advantage of removing all of the volatiles within the wood that have acoustic dampening qualities. So it, in effect, accomplishes, from an acoustic engineering perspective, what you would otherwise have to wait, you know, 40, 50 years for the wood to do on its own, which is basically off-gas all of the vibrational dampening cellulose and gums and things like that, and moisture in the wood. Yeah, so we try to get our wood down to about 7%. And that will do that. After it's torified, the cells are closed, they're locked. And so the only moisture that can be absorbed is in between the cells, as opposed to traditional drying, where the cells can continue to absorb and give off moisture.
And are you, with that equipment, that's not something that you do on site right now for your existing operations?
No, we do not.
Okay. And that equipment that you're getting, is that open venting out to the environment? Or do you have some sort of condensing unit that's going to take those volatiles in?
Yeah, well, the volatiles, I, I use that term liberally. But yeah, primarily, it's just condensate. And that would be something that we'd have a condensate unit that would collect.
Okay.
And it's the same with a vacuum kiln, or even a traditional air drying kiln. It's a bucket with the drain, yeah.
Yep.
But that's, that's really all the venting that would be needed. And it's the same unit that is dual-purpose, can be used as a low, a low-temperature vacuum kiln or higher temperature torrification.
But just to be clear for the record, you are capturing the condensate-
Absolutely.
And, and it is condensing, so some of these units, or some, some solvent extraction units will vent to the atmosphere?
Oh, no, it's, yeah, this is-
Okay, so this is, this is not going to have any impact on the neighbors in terms of it smelling like pine saw all the time, or something like that?
No, 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 not at all. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, Roger?
To torify, is that an enclosed unit?
Mm-hmm.
And is that heat fired?
It is, actually, we're looking at a couple different units. And I believe the one we're looking at is electric heat, but I can verify that if you'd-
So there's no chance of fire?
Again, it's an oxygen-deprived environment, and it's 165 degrees is, is, as high as we go. So the likelihood of combustion is, is very, very low. Yeah, two, two corners of the, of the triangle are missing in that environment.
Great. Okay. And anyone else have any questions? Okay. Since this is a public meeting, I will be opening it up to the public. If anyone wishes to speak for or against the project, if you'd step up to the mic and give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jennifer Barker. I own the property at 49 North Lisbon Road. And I got a mail, letter in the mail the other day stating that this was happening. I have questions. This probably isn't the right place to do it. But since you brought it up, can I ask him questions?
Yes.
I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name's Chris.
Hi, Chris. I didn't see you knocking on my door to sign that petition. But I do wholeheartedly support it, as long as you are aware of a few things. We have a right-of-way through your property there. Did you buy the property, or are you leasing it? You're, you're going to purchase the property, so it'll be-
We're looking for a first.
Okay. We live out behind you, that, we live up, up behind you on the hill, and our right-of-way is right through your, the middle of your property. That needs to be kept clear all the time for emergency purposes. I just want to make sure that that was all kept on the up and up with you when you were looking on moving in there, or?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think we would hope to do you one better and pave it for you and keep it clear.
Really?
That was the idea. And certainly, I talked- That was the idea, and certainly, I've talked to the city about getting in touch with you and, and working with you guys in terms of making sure that. Do you, do you own a leased defense, is that?
No, no, that's across the street, yeah.
Okay, all right. But, yeah, absolutely, we intend to respect the right-of-way and/or talk to you guys about alternative, you know, I guess.
Yeah, we're open to that.
Yeah.
The other thing was, the company that was there before, they did have loud equipment, eight to five, Monday through Friday. You guys weekend workers, or?
No, we, Monday through Friday.
That makes me very happy.
Monday through Friday. We don't have set hours yet, I mean, the business isn't off and running, but the hope is that we're just doing a standard work week.
Well, then, we are in wholehearted support of this happening.
You and I apologize for not coming to your door.
You might not have been able to find our driveway, because, you know.
I would also just invite you to, if you have any further questions, if you wanna come down to the shop and get a sense of the operation, what we're doing, and be happy to, to talk you through what this project is all about, and show you how we make our decisions and all of that.
It's a cool tour.
Well, after, after the adjudication, if you guys wanna talk and, you know, exchange phone numbers and names and then stuff like that in the hallway, that would be great, so we can continue the meeting?
Yeah.
Fantastic, okay. Okay, anyone else from the public wish to speak for or against? No, then in that case, I would close it to the public, and I would entertain a motion or more discussion?
I'd like to make the motion.
Absolutely.
Make a motion pursuant to Article seven, Section four, and Article seventeen, Section five of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the city council for the request by Bourgeois Guitars LLC for a contract zone amendment for the property located at forty-three and fifty-one North Lisbon Street with the additional use of strong storing, storing, milling, drying, heat treating, torifying, and processing of whole logs into pots for musical instruments and musical instrument accessories.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll go with Alex tonight, and any further discussion?
I'd just like to point out, nice to meet the neighbors, because I brought that question up at the last meeting when we discussed this, and it just escaped my mind this evening.
Good. All right, Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Amy, Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
All right, you guys gotta come back tomorrow night.
Yes.
Yes, so that, this will be on the city council agenda tomorrow night. Their meeting is at seven.
Seven, not seven oh five.
Okay, good luck, guys.
Thank you so much.
All righty. Okay, other business. The planning board initiating a change of, to Appendix A of the Zoning and Land Use Code, Article twelve, Section two, Shoreland Zoning, to amend the ordinance to align with a state exemption related to height restrictions for buildings elevated out of the floodplains, floodplain. And? Mr. Hettiger?
So we've been working with people down in the village there, people are familiar with Millian Pond, where the little houses are down there. There's a couple that's interested in replacing their home, but it is in the floodplain. A lot of that little development down there is in the floodplain, and under our current provisions, not under our current provisions, but whenever you do substantial development, you have to elevate your structure at least one foot above base elevation, base flood elevation. In order for them to do that, great, they can do that, but then their house will be smaller, smaller in that it'll exceed the height requirements that are allowed currently under our shoreline zoning provisions. They pointed out to me that, well, did you know that the state provisions have changed? And we did not know that, so back in twenty-twenty-one, the state statute changed, that actually makes a specific exemption for elevating structures when they're in the flood zone. So I said, well, great, let me see if the planning board would be willing to initiate an amendment, so we could adopt that language specifically in the ordinance, so we're consistent with both state law, so it does allow for buildings in the shoreline zone to both meet the floodplain provisions where you elevate it and not run into that ceiling necessarily because you're elevating it out of there.
Okay.
So that, where you see where it says C one, that's the actual language from the statute. If you folks are agreeable, we would move forward with amendment and incorporate that into the right, you know, into the specific section of Article twelve.
Okay, great. Michael?
I'm curious, I think it was last year sometime, somebody wanted, what, did it go to the appeals board rather than us? Somebody wanted to rebuild. Is this the same property?
No, it's same neighborhood, but different property.
Same neighborhood.
We actually have three properties right now on the pond that are all giving us headaches and heartburn as far as floodplain, shoreline zoning, nonconformance, things like that, and we don't have a lot of activity in either the shoreline zone or the floodplain, but it seems to be a popular topic right now. Different property.
Different property, but I was supportive, no, it was probably the appeals board, I think I missed the meeting after wanting to go to it, because I was supporting the petitioner, and they failed.
That property was in the shoreline zone, but not in the floodplain, so it wanted to, this amendment here wanted to help those folks.
Wouldn't address them at all.
Right.
Maybe we can revisit that at some point.
Craig and I have been talking about that. That's kind of on the list of things to do, to see if we can come up with some creative language to help out them and a couple other people.
Okay.
Are there other properties that are in the floodplain, other floodplains within the city?
Uh, there is, yeah. We don't have a lot of developed property in the flood zone, but Jepson Brook, Hartbrook, sections of No Name Pond Brook, sections of No Name Pond, or the, the north end of the pond are in the flood zone, so it's not something that comes up that often. We have to do annual reporting with respect to floodplain activity, the activity that occurs there. Floodplain and shoreline zone don't always match up. You could be in a floodplain and not in a shoreline zone. There's sections of Little Canada that are much far out, when we had an evacuation there a couple of weeks ago. Didn't flood nearly anywhere like we thought it would, thankfully, but those are areas that are outside of the shoreline zone but are in the flood zone.
Just a question, with the, the trail that's gonna go behind the Pickering House, would that be in the floodplain?
Um, I'd have to look. I wanna say the flood zone is probably right at the top of the slope there. I don't think the, I could look, Roger, I, I don't wanna, I, I feel like the mill is not in the flood zone. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but I don't think the mill is in the flood zone. So maybe the trail might be as it runs along the top of the.
No, because I think it's a little bit lower than, than the, the actual building.
Right, but I don't believe the mill itself is in the flood zone.
So would that affect anything in regards to that?
Um, no, well, if, if the mill was in the flood zone and they were gonna do substantial improvement, which they are, substantial improvement is more than fifty percent of whatever the market value is, then you have to either floodproof your building or elevate it one foot above base flood elevation. So a lot of commercial businesses will consider floodproofing, but if it's residential, you can't floodproof, you have to elevate it, you don't have that option, you have to elevate the structure out of the flood zone. So if it's residential, like, like the property we're talking about with No Name Pond, they're gonna have to elevate it regardless.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Alex.
Can you, so, the idea here is that we're gonna allow for non-conforming structure to be elevated, so it's above floodplain height, with the intention that that structure does not change height on its own, so, you know, if it's a.
Right.
Ten-foot-tall shack, it's just gonna go up.
It's ten feet plus, whatever they gotta get out.
Yeah, whatever they gotta get up. When I've read through some of our floodplain requirements, I've noticed that, yes, you can floodproof basements in residential property, so like, sort of non-habitable space, right?
I don't think you can for residential. I think it's, I think it's non-residential, you can floodproof and anything else. I, I double-checked on that, Alex, but I, I'm under the impression, non-residential uses, that could be apartments and whatnot, but for a single-family home, I think it has to be elevated.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, I mean, I wasn't looking at it from a residential eye when I was, I was reading it, but I guess my concern would be is that this could be used to increase the square footage of a non-conforming structure. I mean, generally, having structures in a place where they can get harmed by natural disasters is just not good. That's why we have all these rules, right? But obviously, if the, if the building was already there, you know, people have started lives, it's important, like, you know, that needs to be maintained in some way. I would just wanna make sure that we don't, we don't open up anything here where, oh, you know, I have a ten-foot-tall, you know, lake, lakefront cabin, and now I need to get out of the flood zone, so I'm gonna put a basement under it that's uninhabitable, but like, we're gonna use it for stuff, and now, you know, the cabin suddenly has doubled in size and doubled in intensity in use. So as, as long as what you're saying is true, that, that.
Yeah, and there's two different things going on there, too. If it's in the floodplain, they won't be able to have the basement, because then they'll have a pool when it floods.
Yeah, well, in terms of the floodproofing, though, because when I was reading it.
Right.
From what I remember, it was sort of like you can floodproof spaces below grade.
Yeah.
But if what you're saying is right about that, only being in commercial space, that makes total sense.
Because these folks were asked that question about whether or not they could put a foundation in.
A bit of humidity.
You can't, because the, unless the finished floor of that elevation is gonna be out of the flood zone, you're basically flooding your basement then at that point. They'll, they can do like hydraulic openings in it, things that'll let the water flow through the space, so you don't have this hydrostatic pressure pushing on the exterior walls and things like that. But to your point, it will do somewhat to what you said, where if the building is twenty-five feet height now, and they need to elevate it three feet, well, now that building is gonna be twenty-eight feet high, because they need to elevate it out of the floodzone out there. They wouldn't be able to, if it's in the shoreline zone, they're limited as to how much they can build anyway, because there's expansion limitations in the shoreline zone. You do up to, depending on where you are in the shoreline zone, it's capped at thirty percent of whatever the existing shoreline frontage is out there. So they won't be able to go hog wild just because of shoreline zoning, but they may be able to get an extra story, depending on what property we're talking about. A lot of times, that's what people are looking to do now, is with that thirty percent rule, a lot of these camps are on posts and beams and stuff like that, and they wanna put like a real foundation underneath it, and that, they get instant square footage. To your point, all of a sudden, it's livable area. They, they had a, a one-bedroom camp, and now they have two bedrooms downstairs, and that, that is a lot.
Okay, any, all right, so I'll entertain a motion to initiate code amendment? Anybody wanna?
I will make a motion to initiate code amendment summarized in this memo pursuant to Article seven, Section four, and Article twelve, Section two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roger, okay, and any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Abstain.
Lucy?
I can abstain, right?
Yeah, you can. And Lucy Bisson, yes, so we have five yes and one abstain. Okay, the next item is appointment of a member to the forestry board, and again, because we have so many openings and, you know, we don't have the real new board, I would like to po, to recommend that we continue this to the next meeting, where we hopefully will have people nominated and approved and all that good stuff, and we can appoint someone then.
That won't affect the forestry board's operation, because they're, if they're the third Thursday, that would make it the, oh, that would make it the eighteenth, wouldn't it?
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, it, it was Josh that was on the board any, on that, so I, I think we, we kinda have to, unless you really wanna volunteer to be that member. But your, your expiration too, you're expiring too, so, until you're reappointed, yes, unless you want to.
No.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to make the point that I've been on the forestry board, and I don't think there's any, we should not have any concern about not having one missing member.
One missing meeting.
One missing meeting from one member. We've had entire one-year, two-year cycles where there's been nobody even appointed from this board to the forestry board.
Yeah.
And Auburn hasn't always played nice. I don't know if that has changed in recent years. There was a former mayor that just wanted to do away with certain boards, and basically, our, our members show up and there's nobody on their side, they didn't have quorum, that sort of thing.
No, doesn't surprise me. Okay, and other item.
Oh, do you wanna make a motion, somebody?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to postpone.
Oh, okay, to postpone it till the, the twenty-second, January twenty-second.
Continue, not.
Continue it to the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, Roger? And Roger?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Okay, and Christine, this certificate, thank you for your service to the.
Thank you.
To the board, and. Okay, and a reading of the minutes, I need a motion to adopt the December eleventh minutes?
Make a motion to adopt the December eleventh draft meeting.
Okay, second?
I'll second that, if there's a friendly amendment.
Sure.
Well, there's no copy in the packet, right?
No.
When I read through it this weekend, I noticed that I didn't get credit for asking to fast-track bourgeois guitar. I'd like to have that reflected.
Okey-dokey. Yeah, and Roger, will you make that friendly amendment?